Thank you. On May 19th, 2025, a notice of this meeting was transmitted to the Board of Education, and a copy of the notice was posted at the Educational Center Bolton Board. Copies were also transmitted to the Milburn Short Hills Item, the Star Ledger, the Milburn Short Hills Independent Press, Tap into Milburn Short Hills, the Township Clerk, and members of the Township Committee, the Presidents of the PTO and Civic Associations, and the Public Library. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the following Board of Education minutes? Priya, motion, second. Mr. Lawrence? Priya. Ms. Siavani? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farshooding?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes, on the first two. Abstain on the total one.
Ms. Siavani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrich?
Yes.
Resolution passed.
Thank you. Dr. Diskin, over to you to introduce the presenters for this evening.
Yes. So tonight, we have our High School Assessment or the NJGPA, which is going to be presented by Kristi Young, who is our Director of STEM, but she's also, at this point, our Testing Coordinator for the District. We have Catherine Alvarez, who is our new Director of Guidance, and we have Mr. Bill Lachran, who is our Interim High School Principal. So I invite them up to share the NJGPA results. This is a requirement that we give the results within so many days of it being distributed, and so this is why we are here tonight with this.
Good evening, everybody. Hold on one second. I just want to make this a slide. There we go. It's our great privilege to meet with you this evening to share really good news about our most recent implementation of the New Jersey GPA. It's a test that's given to all our 11th grade students in March, and it is one of the pathways to graduation. And so we've been asked to kind of share those results with you, to talk about, a little bit about the GPA test and how we did versus students across the state, and how we've done longitudinally, and then also to describe for you some next steps now that we have these results. So I'm going to turn it over first to Kristi, who's going to talk to you about the NJGPA. I keep wanting to call it the GEPA, but in the old days, that was an eighth-grade test, G-E-P-A. Everybody talks, you know, grinders, hoagies, all those things around the state. Where I came from, this was the GEPA, but now it's the New Jersey GPA. Kind of ironic, right, GPA? So anyway, we'll share those results with you now. Kristi?
Good evening, everyone. So the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment is given to students in March of 2025 for students who are planning and on track to graduate in the following school year in June of 2026. The state requires that students take this assessment. There are two content areas that are tested. It is tested in ELA, or English Language Arts, and Mathematics. The graduation readiness is reported separately for each of these content areas. Students are required to have a score of 725 in order to be considered graduation-ready. The ELA component is aligned to 10th-grade standards, and math is aligned to Algebra I and to Geometry. So I want to make note that for Milburn students, majority of our students are taking Algebra I as an eighth grader and Geometry as a ninth grader, and then they're taking this assessment in 11th grade. So that's a very long time for students to have between when they were taught the information or when they learned it to when they are taking the assessment. So that really speaks volumes to how students are retaining this information and to celebrate the work that teachers have done with students, so that you can see that this is something that students are learning for the long term as opposed to learning it for the short term. Students who are not graduation-ready or do not have the 725 in each of those components have the opportunity to retake the assessment in the following fall. So during the beginning of the school year, we will be looking at the students who are not graduation-ready to see what pathway they are going to use in order to be graduation-ready. Some students may have achieved the alternative pathway already. So the state requires that all students use the first pathway, and then if you're not successful on the first pathway, then you would use an alternate pathway, which is number two or number three on this slide. And as you can see, there are numerous different assessments that students can utilize to meet graduation readiness. If students do not have the corresponding score on either the ELA or math assessment from row two, then students can appeal and use a portfolio for the work that they've done. I'm going to hand it over to Catherine.
Good evening. I'll be going over the comparisons of students tested for Spring 2025 NJGPA Administration compared to the state of New Jersey. You'll see that this chart shows the number of students who participated in our NJGPA Administration, and it's really comparing our Milburn performance to the overall results of the state. The data is broken down into three categories: graduation-ready 2000 in 2025, not-yet-graduation-ready 2025, and percentage of graduation-ready in 2025. This allows us to see how Milburn students are performing in comparison to the state. As you can see, Milburn significantly outperforms the state averages with 99.1% in ELA and 94.1% in Mathematics. Where am I? And this reflects the district's continued commitment to academic excellence. We want to congratulate the class of 2026. And now I'll move on to comparing across the graduation of three years, 2023, 2024, and 2025. This is, again, the NJGPA, so the next slide shows this performance, and it highlights the percentage of our students who were deemed graduation-ready in ELA and Mathematics, allowing us to examine the trends over those three years. This slide highlights Milburn's consistent high performance. As you can see, 99, 98, 99, and 94, 95, and 94. This is just a reflection of the excellence occurring here. In math, you can also see it's very similar to ELA. Okay, and now I'm going to compare our subgroups in female and male. This slide breaks down our graduation readiness by gender. In ELA, both male and female students performed exceptionally well, with 98.7% of females and 99.5% of males demonstrating graduation readiness. These results continue to reflect high achievement overall while also providing the opportunity to explore targeted supports. Our final slide that I'm going to be reviewing is the breakdown of graduation readiness and percentages by student subgroups as reported by NJGPA. As you can see, it provides evidence on Hispanic, Asian, Black, and African-American, Native Hawaiian, and other Pacific Islander, white, two or more races, as well as students with IEPs and 504s. This comparison allows us to examine performance across these groups and celebrate areas of strength and identify areas for opportunity. If you see the N, it is because they are under 10 students, so we do not report those. Thank you so much. I'm going to pass it on to Kristi to close it up. Oh, maybe it's Bill. There you go, Bill.
Leave me out of the party. Come on. Just to quickly sum up, we talk about graduation pathways. You know, in the old days, it used to be one test in addition to, you know, your grades and credits and all these things. The state now still has that assessment in the junior year with the idea that you can take it again in the senior year if you need to, but has also offered these alternate pathways. And mindful that we don't want to over-assess students, an earlier slide noted that we have 20 students approximately that haven't met graduation readiness in math. The first thing we'll do is to take a look at those 21 students and make sure that have they already met the graduation pathway through either an ACT test or PSAT or an SAT. If so, we're all good. If not, we're going to offer them, again, an opportunity to take the NJGPA. We also have data. We've kind of looked closely at this with our Linkit software, and we can tell based on the students' performance how long they spent on the NJGPA and what their scores were. And while there were 20 students or so that didn't quite make it in math, we already know that five of them were within one point. And we also see that while they had two hours to take a session, some of them went as quickly as 38 minutes. So sometimes it's a matter of test-taking skills and motivation and all of those things. Nevertheless, we'll be able to break down those scores, be able to look at where their skill deficiencies were, make their current teachers available about that, that these are students who are going to be taking this assessment one more time in mid-October to kind of just be aware of that, not necessarily to do anything different than what they're already doing in class, but then we'll also have supplemental resources available, some in-school tutoring, if you will, for those students who desire it. Most tear us down, but everybody, one way or another, makes it through, so I'm happy to tell you that. And so that's kind of what we'll be doing, and it's just good, it's good practice to do that, to kind of identify where the cluster groups are, to see where the skill areas are, share those with our instructors who have them the next year, and see if we can refine those skills. And with that, we'll take any questions that you may have. Yes?
Thank you for sharing that information.
Sure.
And I appreciate the contextual. You mentioned that the NJGPA for the English is based on 10th-grade material.
Yes, yes.
So they retain it.
Right.
The math is based on a combination of eighth and ninth grade.
Right.
You know, if you gave me a geometry test, I'd probably fail it.
Right.
So I think that's the reason you're, I would surmise, you're seeing math in the mid-'90s, whereas the ELA is consistently at 99. I think the delta, the 20 students, they probably didn't retain as much.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a lack of proficiency.
Right.
So I would make sure that, you know, please help our students understand it's not a deficiency on their part, it's just a question of timing, and we appreciate you getting every one of our students through the finish line, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Sorry. Bill, I just want to make sure that I understand what you said about getting everyone across the finish line.
Right.
So is it generally the practice, generally the outcome every year where in the 12th grade, everyone that has not met the criteria of 725 ends up meeting by the time they graduate?
Almost without exception, because, again, there are three levels. The first and the easiest, most immediate, is passing, which a passing score is considered 725 or better. The second are the various outside assessments that a student may take in his or her high school career. And if after the October admission of the test, we still have somebody who hasn't made it, then we go into what's called a portfolio, where they get some Level III intensive remediation, and they submit a portfolio of work that is scored by the state to ensure proficiency. So I don't know the history of this district, but I can't imagine anyone didn't graduate because they didn't make good on the GEPA. They might not have got all their credits. They might have failed English somewhere, because remember, this is in combination to the local and state credit requirements that a student has in high school. But as far as this assessment and the requirement for this, I'm pretty confident everyone will make it that way.
I appreciate the clarity there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Siavani?
Mr. Lachran?
Yes.
And Ms. Alvarez, thank you. This was your first presentation, and I think it was very insightful, so thank you for the details, and of course, Ms. Young always do a great job. Just one comment, I did see that certain ethnic groups and, you know, obviously female students are, there's a gap, so I'd love to hear insights. Maybe not now, but when you've given it enough thought as to...
We were talking about it ourselves. I think at that level, it might be negligible, because, you know, we're talking maybe five students. That could tip the scales, but we'll look at it closer.
Thank you.
Yeah. Like, I'm still thinking about that .5 kid who didn't make it, but that's the three kids in ELA, so. Anyone else?
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Nice job. Thank you so much for coming this evening. I know you probably have some summer hours you'd like to regain, so if you'd like to, you know, don't feel obligated to stay for tonight. Our next presentation is from New Jersey School Boards. This is something that we do each year. It's sort of like the basic school boardsmanship, and then it talks about the CSA evaluation and the school board self-evaluation. So I'm going to turn it over to Jean Cleary, who is our representative from New Jersey School Boards.
So hello. It's my pleasure to be with everyone. I did distribute to each of you the packet, and I just would like to start with that first. We're going to look at the one that's on the top in more detail in the slides. I also have a sample for you about board goals. There's one sample filled out on creating action plans for board goals. I know you'll be addressing goal-setting later this evening. And some reference information that could be helpful, the calendar of what the board should be focusing on month to month, and impacts of policy on student achievement. So we're going to actually talk more about that. So I want to start off, actually, by recognizing that your board has some experienced members who may have heard similar training before and some newer members who perhaps haven't. But the goal of this this evening is to kind of get us all, as a refresher or perhaps new to some, on the same page, so that as you start to have your conversations that lead into the work that you'll be doing together as a board team for your students over the next months, that we're starting off with a good foundation. So we're going to look at first the four functions of a Board of Education, and they are to provide policy, planning, appraisal and oversight, and then communication. So what is the purpose of policy? It's to provide guidance, necessary guidance, to how the district will be run. We're going to look at that in more depth. The next, planning, is to ensure, most importantly, that you're providing for a program of quality instruction to advance student achievement. All of your work, all of your conversations that you have should answer the question of how does this serve our students towards student achievement, right? You may at times be having a conversation about facilities, but we recognize the tie-in is that students need good, safe spaces to be able to learn best, right? The third is appraisal, ensuring, as has been laid out in your roles and responsibility in the Code of Ethics, that you are providing for the effective management of the school district by employing your superintendent and doing the required statutory evaluation, and we're going to look at that in greater detail as well. And of course, it's important to always maintain good, clear communication internally with the work that you do as a board and as a team, but very importantly, with your community. Now, to be clear, that doesn't mean that the board is having that direct conversation with the community, right? We recognize that the superintendent speaks for the district and the board president speaks for the board. So just a quick refresher about how you wound up here and the authority that you have. Where does it come from? It doesn't necessarily come from an election or an appointment. The New Jersey Constitution gives the Legislature the power to govern schools. The Legislature has delegated the authority to the State Board of Education. NJ DOE has the authority to carry out mandates created by the higher bodies. Within the laws and regulations, local school boards can then create their own policies covering things that are affecting students of Milburn, okay? But whatever those policies are, right, whether they're mandated policies, state and federal policies you have to be in compliance with, or the policies you create locally, you have to ensure that they are being put in place to serve the education for all students. And you also have to ensure in your role that you're listening to the community and public input and providing for opportunities for that public input, so that they have, the community has a clear understanding of what decisions are being made, why they're being made, and how they best serve students. So it's important, and I know you've had your training for ethics because I provided it to you, but board members are recognized as state officials empowered by state law to govern local public schools, and you do that when you're seated, as you are right now, at a legally constituted meeting that was advertised and with a quorum of your board present, right? So we have to make sure those things are in place to really do the work that we have to do. Now, this is the sheet, one of the sheets that I provided to you for reference going forward, to make it really accessible to you, because it's really the, it defines the work that you do, right? So when we look at setting the stage for roles and responsibilities as you enter into this upcoming year and the important topics you're going to have to address, staying focused on how they serve your students in Milburn, we want to really be clear that across the top, the role of the board is to really bring the what. What is it that we want to see? How do we set the course and the direction? How do we use our policy to communicate that? How do we express the aspirational goals that we have for our students? And how do we perform our function of oversight to ensure that the district is being effectively run for the students? On the bottom, you'll see the role of administration, right? The role of administration headed by your superintendent is the day-to-day implementation of the policies, that are those guiding principles of how the district will function. It's the supervision day-to-day and holding accountable everyone on staff to be performing at a high level for service of students. So when we look under these categories, right, we have planning and program, personnel, finance, facilities, and communication, we're working together on the board team with the superintendent, who is a non-voting member of the board, right? But we approach this work from different viewpoints. We have different responsibilities to bring. So because both administration, of course, and the board function of policy to guide, planning, and oversight and appraisal is so important for the board, we really want the board to really own those roles, right, and to stay focused on it, because it's really a checks-and-balance system that leads to efficiencies to really serve your students. So under planning, the board, to bring the what under planning, will be looking at critical issue analysis, understanding what's happening in your communities and the impact it will have on your schools, right? Do you have new developments coming in? Do you have new families moving in with students who may have different needs than you've seen before? We have to serve all students. Long-term vision planning, right, so that when we work on goal-setting, we know that we have these aspirational visions of what we're trying to accomplish for students. Incorporating the vision into the annual goal-setting, right, and we're going to talk about goal-setting in a moment, making sure that all the goals mesh. What we're really looking to do in our role as a board member is to stay within the authority that we have, to ensure that there's really efficient running of the district so that we can really be serving students efficiently and have the best outcomes for them, right? Research shows that when boards do stay committed to their governance functions, that the outcomes, the student achievement outcomes and opportunities for those students really is higher. The research, you know, really does support that, right? Because it's not hard to understand, it keeps from distracting, right, and we stay focused on what we need to do. So under planning, the administration headed by the superintendent is going to be dealing with the educational information. Where are our students? Where do we need them to be? What do we need to provide for them? What are best practices? To bring forward and work with staff to ensure that that's happening. Allocating the resources. So the budget has been passed, but the administration has to ensure that allocation of resources is appropriate to support everything that's happening in the schools. Training of staff, evaluation of staff and programs, quite frankly, and reporting out to always keep the board informed of what it is you need to know, right? The board needs to maintain that balcony view of operations and allow administration to have the day-to-day, in the hallways, on the floor view. That's very direct, right? So for programs, when we look at curriculum and co-curricular, one of the things to just recognize is that the New Jersey Student Learning Standards recognizes that curriculum is not just your subject classes, right? It's everything that touches on a student during the course of the day. So all of the opportunities that we want to provide for the students of Milburn have to be carefully considered, and the board weighs in on what the standards and expectations are towards that. Now, the first thing that's your role is policymaking. How do you communicate that? Is through policies that outline that and also demand equity, right, and access by all of the students. You have to ensure that your funds and resources are made available when you support a budget that's going to support the goals that you have and the work that needs to happen to reach those goals. And you have to evaluate, right? So you'll get updates from the superintendent, maybe quarterly throughout the year, talking about the success of programs and things that have been put into place, so that you're aware and you have that oversight function where you can see the positive progress that's being made along the way. And of course, you know, if you haven't gotten updates and you need them, understanding how the board norms support requesting information. That's an important thing, right? For program, of course, the administration is going to be matching programs with New Jersey Student Learning Standards to make sure that they're in compliance with everything required. They're going to deal with the curriculum for the cycle, scope, and sequence to ensure that there's, you know, review over time, whatever, whichever course is going to be reviewed this year, and then on a cycle, the different courses will be reviewed, subject areas, I should say, to ensure that things are really designed to best serve students. And scope and sequence, to make sure that when we have what we have in third grade, it's really efficiently preparing students for fourth grade, right? We want to make sure that that works happening. That's the work of administration. Now, if you're in a committee structure and you're on a curriculum committee, you may be hearing that firsthand and then reporting that out. You may even invite in your specialists, as you did tonight, to speak directly to the board and the community to give that information, so that everyone is engaged in what's happening in the schools, okay? Additionally, towards programs, administration will decide what's the appropriate technology needs for different programs at different levels and ensure that there's equitable service of all students throughout the district. Under personnel, clearly, the board has a role to play in personnel, which is really through ensuring that you have effective policies that outline the expectations towards equity, hiring, training, evaluation, and retention of staff, right? Your policies hold up those standards and guide the work forward. The administration, though, is going to be charged with actually the hiring practices, the interview schedule, staff assignments, staff development, supervision, evaluation, and then recommendation to the board for retention and tenure. Under finance, we look at finance, we think budget right away, but it's also some of the monthly statements that'll come through your business administrator to keep you apprised of what's happening towards finances throughout the year. So the board needs to be able to match goals with the budget, understand what are the goals we're setting, and when it comes time to develop and approve that budget, to be able to ensure that that budget is going to make available the funds necessary to serve students the way you had planned. Now, setting a budget calendar and process is really one of the primary roles of the budget, I'm sorry, of the board towards the budget, right? You are not directly creating the budget. That's the work of administration. But setting through your policies to speak to what are the steps that should happen, that also helps to inform the staff of what they should expect and how they effectively participate in that process, that the community knows when they are expecting to be hearing updates and have opportunities to address it, right? So the board isn't creating the budget, but matching up what we are trying to accomplish and funding that, and then creating that calendar and setting the stage so that that can happen and roll out well. And we leave the actual development of the budget to administration, and the purchasing, procurement, and reporting of purchases monthly, that the board has to approve those monthly financial statements, right? And it's just not to get into the weeds of those things, but to understand what has happened and that it's appropriate, right? More looking at the higher level, that everything is balancing out and that we're not overspending, but it's really left in the hands of your BA and, of course, superintendent to ensure the day-to-day operations are being addressed appropriately. The administration will prepare through your BA primarily through, to prepare for any audits... to ensure the day-to-day operations are being addressed appropriately. The administration will prepare through your BA primarily through, to prepare for any audits, right? The role of the board is to ensure that you have identified who will be doing your audit, right? And to receive the audit report. And then if any corrective action is put into place, to ensure that you're getting feedback on how that's being accomplished. But actually, the handling of those actions would be through the administrative office. Facilities, you have to be very aware of the challenges on your facilities. And I really can't recall a district I've gone into anytime recently where facilities haven't become part of the conversation, right? Through growth in communities, through aging infrastructure and all of those things. So understanding what the plans are, what do we want to see? What might we need to consider so that new curriculum could be appropriately taught in a setting that's conducive for learning, right? The facility management day-to-day or for long-term projects is really going to be handled through administration. But one of the things that the board has to do towards finance is also ensure that when you're looking to approve that budget, that just the way you need to at home to say, "Well, I know I can pay my bills," right? And do all of those things, that there's an appropriate plan to set money aside for long-term projects, right? For long-term, especially facility plans, to understand how we're arriving at the numbers. Usually, a lot of effort goes in to understanding that mechanical equipment doesn't last forever and all of that, that we have a plan in place and we're setting money aside, okay? But actually, any projects that are going on are going to be overseen by administration. Communication is really the board's responsibility to ensure that there are effective channels for allowing the community to understand the workings of the district, right? Your board meeting now is a business meeting in public for the benefit of the community and the public. It's not necessarily a back-and-forth meeting with the public. And when the section for public comment comes up, it's their opportunity to be heard for their concerns, right? And then go and let that inform the work that you're going to do. So when we look at it towards roles and responsibilities and how the board is going to, through your role and responsibility, ensure that you're staying focused on those things that are going to really support students and student achievement, really recognizing that you do that through your policies. Your policies are going to provide that direction to the superintendent. It's going to support the basis for all decision-making. It's going to be an imperative for action because we now know what's expected of us. It also helps clear policies really provide for clear communication and remove ambiguity. It also ensures that there's equity and that people are treated fairly under your policies, right? Which is why it's really crucial that policy review is done regularly by the board. And it's fine if you work through committee to do that. Often, that's what happens. Sometimes, it's handled by a full board. That's really a board choice. But it really needs to new happen. And the superintendent also will at times be able to provide you with some guidance, knowing as the educational leader of the community that certain things you may need to be addressing quicker, sooner than later, right? As visionaries, talking about bringing that what? What do we want to see in the district for our students? You are visionaries and goal-setters. So you set the standards for program quality of instruction, right? Now, that doesn't mean that you're developing the curriculum, but you're setting the standards of what we want our students in Milburn to have exposure to. Some of that will be required through New Jersey Student Learning Standards, but other opportunities that we feel make them well-rounded and prepared for their futures. Those are your vision statements that you should be matching your goals up to, right? Provide for professional development for staff. We recognize that at times, staff may benefit from professional development that's actually training on content. One of the quick things that comes to mind is how to properly use AI if we're going to use it, right? That's a content-driven type of training. But other times, it could be that staff needs professional development so that they have the methodologies that they need to work effectively with all students that they serve, right? So the board has to understand what the needs are and be supportive of that so that we're really ensuring that we're putting things in place for our students to move forward. And of course, you have to, through your function as a board, to hold the administration accountable for the achievement of goals. And a singular way you're really going to focus on doing that is through the superintendent evaluation, and we're going to be looking at that a little closer. So as communicators, right? You are of your community, you're ambassadors of your community, right? You want to be providing a lot of opportunity through perhaps presentations, recognitions of both staff and students at your board meetings and other pathways to keep the community at large, not just the parent base, but the community at large engaged with the good work that's happening in the schools, right? We want them to feel informed and engaged. You ensure that there's two-way communication and you leave the actual communication to the superintendent to come from the superintendent's office because she, by policy, actually is the one that speaks for the district, right? We want clear, concise messaging going out so that people really benefit from that communication. You want to promote public participation in the schools, right? We want to share all of the wonderful things that are happening on a regular basis. But we also want to be clear about the challenges that we're seeing in the schools, right? So that people understand what we're trying to address as we're moving forward, whether it's through the budget process or other discussions that are going to happen, that they're aware that there were certain challenges and that you're doing what you need to do to try to support a positive way forward. And you want to continue to always work to secure that public support for the schools and the district goals by really clearly working through the authority you have, right, as board members, focused on policymaking, planning, and appraisal. So the superintendent's role looks a bit different, right? The superintendent's role really falls into these three columns. So she is the chief advisor to the board. She's a non-voting member of your board. She is there to actually provide guidance from her experience to advise the board. So when you have questions, it's helpful to consult with your superintendent, who can share what's happening here in Milburn and give you that shared information that you all are considering and moving forward together with. She is the staff liaison to the board. So she will bring information to the staff, mostly through sharing, you know, the expectation that policies will be followed, that the board has set to guide everyone's behavior. But if there are issues that arise in schools that need the board, you know, board action or consideration, then she will bring that to you, right? It's not appropriate for individual staff members to be coming directly to the board. So we want to retain that focus. She will provide briefings on things that require board action that have come through. As a former administrator myself, I know that from, you know, multiple sources, state and federally, things are coming in through email on a regular basis with what we need to know, what opportunities for grants, you know, new things that are changing that we need to be aware of, information that may impact our decision-making. So she's your advisor to be able to bring that to you. And she evaluates and assesses policy implementation. So if it's reported to her or she observes that certain policies might not be really effective anymore or really, we may need to make amendments or perhaps we don't have a policy on something that now is the time to consider doing, she can bring that to the board so that the board can move forward. She's the executive officer, the person in charge of administering those policies and ensuring compliance of all the staff. She's running the school district day-to-day, providing importantly, progress updates, including on emergent issues. Now, that doesn't mean in an emergency that everyone is getting an individual call, to be clear. So your board norms, policies should be outlined in your bylaws and your communication protocols of what a fair expectation is so that you're informed. But having handled safety and security in my district formerly, I can tell you that there are times when she's not permitted to tell you. But she can keep you aware that there might be something happening, right? So just have clear understanding and expectations of what that looks like. She'll also direct staff members directly through her personal action or delegate authority to those who are experts in their areas and supervise the activities, right? And she's recognized in the role of superintendent as being the educational leader for the community. So we want to consult with this person who's on our team, who has that information that we can use to inform our discussions and our decision-making. And we want to support her in remaining active in professional organizations. That's her version of professional development very often, right? There's only one superintendent in a district. So very often, through professional associations like ASA and others, where she has the opportunity to learn along with other superintendents. She'll bring, make herself familiar with any new ideas in education and be able to share that with you. And the final one is, I always believe in stealing good ideas and that's one of her functions as well, to be able to bring to the attention of the board things that she learns about that might be successful in other places that might be something you want to consider for your students here. So the importance of being really effective is what's at stake. What's at stake is students, their outcomes, and their success. And we heard earlier tonight, it couldn't have been planned better, that that was being discussed tonight, right? That is really the work that we're here to do. Now, I recognize, having been a board member, that there are many, many things that come before the board that can be important and can act to distract. And that's why process, your board process of how you communicate with each other, what you expect, how you move through your roles and responsibilities, understanding that. When you don't understand that or it's not clear, ask those questions so it can be addressed because student outcomes really improve when the board as a governing body and the community representative understands what is expected of them, as well as the superintendent as the chief administrative officer and educational leader, working together, right? To really always put students at the center of all the work you're doing. So this is a slide about every relationship you've ever had in your life, right? No surprises, it's a big one. It's understanding that it's not necessary for a board member to bring every question that they have to the board table in an open public board meeting. If you need clarity on something, you need information so that you could be best prepared for your board meeting, you need to understand what your established board protocols are. Of how to get the information, ask the question. Does it go through the president of the board? Does it go directly to the superintendent, right? Remembering, of course, that we want to be getting what we need so we can fulfill our roles, but also ensuring that we're doing it in an efficient way and not drawing other people off task, right? Surprises are not helpful. The answer you may want could easily be shared with you, but if it's, if perhaps the BA isn't prepared in that moment and doesn't have what he needs at his fingertips and you're first asking him at a board meeting, it's not an efficient way to go forward where he could have given you what you needed to be prepared for the meeting if he had known about it ahead of time. So staying in your lane is not just something we talk about lightly and it's not just even a best practice. It's really a requirement that board members recognize, right? Through the Open Publics Meetings Act, that individual board members have no legal status other than that of any other citizen of the community except when you're sitting with a quorum of your board, as you are tonight, in a legally constituted meeting. That means that the public has been notified through the appropriate channels that there's a meeting happening and that there will be an opportunity to make a public comment at some point of this meeting. So the role of a board member is incredibly important. So this presentation isn't to tell you what you can't do, although I'm about to do that. It's really to remind you that because your roles and responsibilities are so important, we really want to commit to doing them properly, right? And not do something that would distract from the good work of the board. It's a team sport, right? It's a team sport of all the board members and the superintendent on that team, serving a common goal, which is your students. So as individuals, board members can't make decisions for the board. I think we'd all agree that we understand that. Can't take actions for the board. And we know from prior ethics training that it's not whether that was your intention to do, but if a reasonable member of the public believes that you, in your capacity as a role, as a board member, are speaking in your role on a topic in front of the board, that's problematic. So we want to really remember who speaks for the district, the superintendent. Who speaks for the board, the president of the board. As individual members, you cannot direct any staff member or administrator, okay? The board as an entity retains the legal authority to do things by majority, right? And we'll talk about majority and consensus, but we have to step back and even though our intention's made to, you know, get the information I need so I could do my job well, we need to really respect that no individual board member can be directing staff, making requests for reports, doing those things. That has to go through an established process to ensure that the majority of the board sees value in that, to make the request to the superintendent for, say, a report that you feel as a majority would really help inform you to fulfill your role, right? But that provides for the superintendent to be able to stay focused and efficiently working day-to-day on those things under her purview. And individually, no board member directs the superintendent either, right? It has to be as part of the board. So just to be really clear on the defining lines. Boards act with the majority and nothing really can happen without a majority of the board. I think we all recognize that. But the real power comes from a board's ability as a team to be able to build consensus, right? To be able to listen for understanding, not listen for responding, to be able to just accept that each of you are doing this challenging volunteer work that's got very serious outcomes because you're all committed to serving your students. And on any particular topic, while you might disagree about the best path forward, if we recognize in each other that we're all trying to serve students and we show an interest in understanding why the other person may not agree with us, it helps us to develop an understanding and a sensitivity about how they're trying to best serve students as well. And try to build some consensus where we have an environment where there can be diversity of thought that can really best serve your students. Understanding this does not mean that everyone will 100% agree, but that good discourse will happen, good discourse towards what's really best for students. Common ground is very important so that all voices are heard and respected. And then if you're in the minority on that topic, you can really vote along with the majority if you feel that your position has been heard, considered, and you're clear on why you haven't carried the majority. There's really a board obligation as an individual board member to be a unified voice for your community and the service of your students. Now, there are times where perhaps you just can't feel that you can vote with the majority. But it's really highly effective boards that are able to be heard, have the good discussions, and then say, "I recognize that I'm not persuading the majority of the board, so I am going to back the board because I recognize they're all trying to support students and move forward." The important thing is we can't get bogged down with constant infighting or trying to be right, right? It's not important if we're right. It's important how we serve our students effectively. So with the code of ethics, we know we went through this earlier, right? Not to administer the schools along with our fellow board members to make decisions to serve the interest of all students in the district, to employ good process like chain of command, which supports staff so that issues can be resolved closest to where they are. That ensures that a solution will be handled similarly if that problem comes up again, which helps to support equity, right? Allowing administrative, administration and staff, teaching staff, to be able to address those things where it needs to be. And that finds the most efficient outcomes for the person who presents with a concern or an issue, right? Now, when we look at this, we talk about chain of command. And chain of command is a real challenge for board members. You are of your community, you're doing this work because you care. And when someone approaches you with something that they feel you can help expedite a solution for them, it's really hard to say, "I can't listen to you," right? But we are in an educational environment and so we can educate people. We can explain that we are not permitted as board members to directly We can explain that we are not permitted, as board members, to directly look into, investigate, get back to anyone. We have to put them towards the chain of command, and we have to leave it in the hands of the appropriate authorities. It's your responsibility as a board to provide access to the public, but not to, your job to see the schools are run well, but not to address individual issues that need to only go through the administrative chain, and then if they come to the board, they can be decided as a team. So we recognize the chain of command and how that actually operationally allows for efficiency so that problems are resolved, issues are addressed, people get the answers that they have and need, that are clear for them, so things can continue to move forward and serve students. Communication tips are remembering that the superintendent is the spokesperson for the district and the president is the spokesperson for the board. No one use your internal communication protocols. I have a question about a committee report. What do I do? How do I do it? How do I get my answer? I have a question for my board packet to be prepared for the meeting. What does that look like? So that we adhere to the same rules for everyone to maintain that efficiency. With emails, understand that we should not be responding all and that we should follow our protocols of moving those emails that may come in from the public towards the administration in the outlined process that you have. Your policy, as outlined in the Code of Ethics, right? Your role as policymakers, planners, and appraisers. You need to be creating policies that are going to be the basis for decision-making that ensures equitable treatment of all parties. It's a primary role of board members. And even if you're not on the policy committee, it's important to stay aware of the work of the policy committee as they report out to you and make recommendations, to understand why recommendations are being made and how they serve your students. Four types of policies, of course, are mandated, required by state or federal law, monitored, which are monitored by the state, for instance, a nepotism policy. Critical for other reasons, case law has been decided and we might want to use that so that we ensure that our practice is going to keep us from unintended consequences. And your discretionary policies, which really go to the local control you have on issues that directly affect Milburn. So, in your packet that I gave you is this slide. And when board members aren't familiar with how important policy is and why it's so important you are policymakers, when we want to connect that to student achievement, it's laid out here for you. Policies impact student learning because they address all of these areas: academic standards and assessments, curriculum, learning climate, parent and community engagement, board governance and planning for effective operations, instruction, the educational programs, how we serve all of our students, and professional standards. So your policies are crucial to how well your district is able to move forward. So you want to review policies on an ongoing basis. It doesn't have to be at every board meeting. It should be that there's an established calendar for a committee, for all of your committees, really, and that on a regular basis that these things are being reviewed to ensure that they are really serving the needs and in compliance with the law. So, all policies affect the entire school district. They ensure that continuity, consistency, and fairness. They help clarify roles and responsibilities for board administration and staff. They help to legitimize board actions because you're not arbitrarily making decisions, you're using your policies to guide you in the actions that you take. It allows for the board and the superintendent to operate efficiently on the same team. It provides the superintendent and administration with direction in the day-to-day operations of the district. It allows the board to stay at that macro level, that balcony level, of making sure that the district is being effective and well-run without getting into the daily level of administration. And, of course, it needs to be consistent with board bylaws, which address your own governance, and federal and state laws and regulations. So remembering that every thing, that every policy that you approve is, has to be that it's serving the educational interests of all students of the district. So I hope that this was an important refresher because as you go forward and we look at creating goals, which you'll be doing later this evening, how creating goals ties into the role you have, right? How district goals are different from board goals, okay? With permission, should I go forward, or?
Do you have a shortened version?
Yeah, how much more?
Yeah, this is, this is much quicker, really.
Yeah, like five, 10 more minutes, hopefully.
So, the evaluation of the superintendent ensures, that is how you perform your oversight function, right? So as an ethics reminder, the board, a board member cannot participate if you have a relative in the district. But it is how you effectively perform your oversight of the effective running of the district. Superintendent evaluation mandated by law holds accountable the running of the district under the superintendent. So here we have the legal guidelines that address that you have to do this annually. You have to have it in writing. You have to meet to discuss the findings as a board. The only people who can't participate are conflicted board members with family member in the district, relative in the district. You have to base it on two parts: the district goals that you're going to be setting this evening, as well as the professional standards. And it has to be completed by July 1st. It has to also address student achievement and ensure that it's meeting the needs of subgroups, as you spoke about earlier. So, for the board to know that under CUSAC, you have to meet governance indicators, having a policy that outlines that you'll be doing this and that you'll effectively do it by July 1st, and that the evaluation will be based on student achievement and meeting the needs of students, as well as professional standards of running the school district. It is not a requirement to use the New Jersey School Board tool. It's an optional service, but it does provide for a standard methodology, and it ensures that all parts of the requirements under the law are met. And we work with you to develop that compiled document and walk you through the process. So on these slides, for time, what we can do is just say that I know that this has been done, the district census is up to date. Any individual board member that knows they have a conflict needs to report that to the BA, so that's reported to me, and you cannot participate in the process. And the board should be setting a superintendent evaluation calendar similar to how you should have calendars for committee meetings, as well as your board meetings, so that everyone's available and it runs effectively going into the year. This is a sample evaluation calendar, month to month, of what should be done, and the board works with the superintendent to set the dates of when she would complete her part, when the board members would complete theirs, when you'd be meeting to discuss it in executive session, and when you write it up, when you would meet with her to discuss the findings. This is the process, again, outlined, similar to the calendar. You may want to consider a pre-evaluation conference in March, perhaps, to come together and just review this process so that we all know what's expected of us, but those dates should already be on your calendars. The first part of this has to do with district goal assessment, right? Three to five strategic goals that are going to be the focus of going forward throughout the year. This is going to ensure that the action plans that are in place are going to support what has to happen for students. Here we just see what it's going to look like when you participate in this through our tool, what sample compilations of goals are going to look like in that first part. And then after that is evaluated, the professional standards for the leadership of the district, which has been developed with ASA, towards these six standards. This is what it will look like. So, this can be shared with all of you. I know you're not going to be doing this evaluation process until later in the year, but it's important to see how it ties into the work you're going to do tonight towards setting goals, right? Because at the end, the evaluation of the superintendent towards meeting those goals is going to be part of this. So these are the steps that you would take. As a reminder, this can be shared with all the board members so that they have this for reference going forward. The template is provided, the template for actually what will be shared with superintendent, which will be signed off in the official evaluation. And the steps that you have to take to both meet and, as just a board, and with the superintendent. And it's important to understand that it's a majority document, so if there's a minority opinion on any section, that's important of why you're meeting with superintendent to discuss the findings, so that minority opinions can be shared verbally. The superintendent will keep a copy, and the board will keep a copy. By your board policies and bylaws, you will either keep a copy in the personnel file or your board attorney will retain it for you. Remember that this is a cycle that starts now with your district goal setting and concludes with the actual evaluation and meeting to discuss. And it's a way to hold the board accountable as well, is to go on and participate in doing the board self-evaluation. And on these slides, it just walks you through the importance of also doing a regular board self-evaluation annually to help you have conversations about how you can work towards continuous improvement in your own governance and in supporting district goals under the authority that you have. The tool is also available on our website, and there are resources available for you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, of course.
Any questions for Ms. Clearland? Thank you so much. I think that's all the presentations we have.
Correct.
Board President's Report, just a couple things. I'd like to start by welcoming everyone that's new to our district. There are so many new faces around that we've seen. Of course, Mr. Bill Walgren, the interim high school principal, Catherine Alvarez already presented, fantastic. Mr. Peter Stars, our interim business administrator. I just meant Kyle Arlington, our new head of HR in the, he's in the audience here. Is there anyone else new that I haven't met yet? But it's just fantastic to see all these new faces. I've already heard there's kind of so much positive energy going into the district and getting prepared for this year. Not to take away from past years, there's always a burst of energy as we get ready for the new, new school year. It's just good to see so many new faces gelling together. I think it's really a credit to our district to be able to attract so much key talent, top talent throughout the state to come here to Milburn and give it their best effort to take us to the next level. And I would just like to say to all those new folks, certainly, Milburn has a long tradition, long history, strong performance. We're steeped in many traditions, so there's a very big challenge for you here. You need to maintain and improve that standard of excellence. The expectations here are sky-high, and every time we think we do something to raise those expectations, we're immediately asked to push them up even higher. So you're coming into that environment, as I'm sure you well know. I ask you to respect our traditions. Carry them forward, evolve them, add new ones when you can, but certainly learn and respect what we have done. However, the challenge is, there should be no sacred cows. You're all professionals, I'm sure you'll bring a very thoughtful, methodical approach to change. Because we've always done it that way, should never be justification for anything. However, on the flip side of that, if it's not broke, don't fix it, right? You'll find the happy medium there, and we, we trust all of you to do it. By and large, you know, the board has done its job. We've brought all of you in. We've created the environment for positive change going forward. Now we're handing it off to you and hopefully stepping back to monitoring closely how this will be done. So I'm very much looking forward to this upcoming year. So, welcome again. Three kind of administrative things I also wanted to touch on. One of the things we did change in sitting down with Mr. Stars was just to take a look at our agenda and how we done, did things in the past, and he suggested some great streamlining things. It's in the idea of efficiency, not to keep anything from other board members or public. So, for example, in the voting section, we used to kind of read through every single proposal. We're not going to do that anymore. It's written on the agenda, everyone has the handout. It seems to be a waste of time. We've also had sort of a dual procedure where we asked to move things in consent agenda format, meaning all together, and then actually approve them. The assumption now is, everything is in consent agenda format, we'll just ask for approval. So just taking a step out there. Before we go into votes, we'll ask if there's any matter for discussion. So that's when board members feel free, if something you want to talk about more, you don't think it's ready to be voted on, that's your chance. In the past, we've kind of asked for carve-outs, which was a very cumbersome procedure. So this is the same thing, more streamlined. If at any point you're not sure, just say, "Point of order, how do I do this?" And, you know, we'll, until we get used to these new procedures. And we already saw the example, I think Mr. Reddy said, "These are yeses, this one I abstain." Before, we would have carved that out and done a separate vote just so one person could abstain. This seems much more efficient. So I very much appreciate the improvements, Mr. Stars. We'll see how it goes. Second admin thing on negotiations, we've approved all of our contracts. The way they were done is through a series of memorandum of understandings at the end of that process. It's normally pretty quick to just simply transfer all those into the final agreement and be able to put something out. That actually hasn't happened yet, I'm a little frustrated. So, we're working on it, it'll get done. I just kind of wanted to mention that, there's nothing bad going on. It's just if someone says, "Show me your MEA contract," it's kind of like, "Oh, there's six attachments right now." We're, we're finalizing the process to get it all together, so that will be done. And finally, I don't think... I just wanted to mention board elections. We have nine members, three are up for election every year. They'll be on the November 4th ballot. I believe the deadline for someone to file is 4:00 PM, July 28th, so there's still plenty of time to get your petitions in. I encourage anyone thinking of running, reach out to myself or any board member to get more information. We certainly like to see people involved from our community. I think that's all I have. Dr. Diskin?
Thank you so much. And I'd like to also reiterate and to welcome our Peter Stars to the dais. And as we know, Kyle Arlington is going on for approval tonight to be our Director of Human Resources. We welcome Kyle back to the district, and we look forward to collaborating with him and a great thought partner for all of us. So, thank you for being here tonight. As always, the, on the agenda is any safety or fire drills that we've done for the month of June. Just a note, we are required to do those if there are students in the building, so with our ESY programs and things of that nature. I was certainly excited to see the smiling faces at our extended school year program, which began last week. That fun and engaging and successful summer of learning and growth. Thank you to Brian Rogoff for his leadership to making a wonderful program for both students and staff. The next thing I want to say is that the Milburn administration team, while all largely new, have been working very busy and have been busy in July. We've been working on a Leadership Academy, which is every Wednesday, but in between on Tuesdays, Thursdays, we have catch-up meetings, just to get everyone on the same page. I think that this is, you know, a wonderful restart and reset for reminders of, for example, tomorrow we're doing safety and security protocols and those things to get everyone on the same page. It also fosters collaboration and team building. We had a wonderful session provided with leadership skills given by our in-house expert. We, you can notice that I was a flying squirrel and... We, you can notice that I was a flying squirrel and John was a flying squirrel and we did some trust exercises and some things with that on the adventure course. So it's been an absolutely wonderful summer with all these new folks coming in and, you know, maintaining the excellence that Mr. Heinrichs described. And as we know, our hiring update, we have pretty much all of the staff has been hired. We have just a couple here and there, but nothing to be alarmed about. I think we'll be fine for the opening of the school year. Our high school principal search is underway. We received from the S C A, out of the 75 candidates, they narrowed it down to about 10 and we did interview 10 candidates. We will narrow that down and continue our search process as the summer continues. In addition, we've been working closely on the enrollment update. This is something that we look at daily, thinking about what our enrollment process is and what our class sections are. So, you know, I have a table that I will share on the board website that talks about the initial enrollments and that we project to be down eight sections. At Deerfield School, we have the same as we had last year with 17 sections. Glenwood was one last at 15. Hartshorn's at 18 sections, South Mountain's at 12, and Wyoming is at 17. So we are, and fifth grade remains the same at 16. So we maintain that our enrollment stands at 4,488 students at this point in time. For the Eagle Scouts, the last board meeting, we recognized additional Milburn High School students who achieved the Eagle Scouts and the May Courts of Honor from Troop. Unfortunately, we missed one of the outstanding Milburn students who achieved the significant accomplishment, Nathaniel Phillips, and we are proud of Nathaniel as he serves as an inspiration for those in years to come. We have a certificate for him that we will be giving to him. And I just wanted to remind everyone about the Say Something Anonymous reporting system, which is available year round. It's 24 seven, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's a tool that is located on our website by Sandy Hook Promise to support students and schools in the efforts to prevent tragedies. This anonymous tip line gives any student, friend, family member, or community member the opportunity to bring concerns to mental health professionals at Say Something about themselves or peers in crisis. I think it's important to mention this at this, in the summertime, especially when our students may not have a guidance counselor at their ready available. And as we know, as we stated a few years ago, and it's worth repeating, that the Federal Communications Commission's approved that three-digit dialing code of 988 for any mental health crisis and student prevention. And that operates again 24 hours, seven days a week for calls, texts, and chats. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Diskin. Moving on to board committee reports, finance facilities. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you. The finance and facilities committee meeting met on July 15th at 2025 at 7:00 PM and discussed the following, oh, before I went there, sorry. Board members present, myself, Brian Lawrence, chair, the South Falls student, Noel Bigman, staff presence, Peter Stars, Dan Nip, and Peter, oh, I repeated him twice. Sorry, Peter, there's two of you now. Actually, it was supposed to be you. And, oh, superintendent, Dr. Diskin. We reviewed and discussed the potential collaboration with the township regarding the high school backfields. Summer projects update, high school auditorium moving forward per schedule. Auditorium roofing is on schedule. High school science lab, replacing five rooftop HVAC units at the high school. Related to rod grants, high school in Wyoming, old boilers removed and new boilers on schedule to be installed. High school field turf replacement on schedule to be completed mid-August. High school weight room and music room in progress. Again, related to rod grants, Washington School replacing air handler units. Wyoming School uni ventilators are being replaced. South Mountain gym HVAC upgrade in progress and on schedule. Hartshorn playground being placed thanks to PTO donation. And Hartshorn Media Center glass wall scheduled for August. In the finance review, we discussed change orders and payment applications to projects. Annual financial audit for the district is planned to commence September, in September. Discuss next steps for going tuition owed by apparent. Resolutions the committee reviewed and recommends the following items for approval by the board. June transfer report, board secretary report, treasurer's report, and bill listed dated June 30th and July 10th, 2025. Recommend change orders to, or use of contract allowance to the following projects. Roof project at middle school, reduction of $12,500. Boiler and replacement and H, HV upgrades, $239,501.15. HVAC upgrades, $6,643.29. Science lab renovation, $6,710. Recommend the following payment applications, boiler HV upgrades, $163,839.09. HVAC upgrades, $252,632.24. Middle school, I'm sorry, Milburn High School auditorium, $571,741.80. Science lab renovation, $48,020. Washington HVAC upgrade, $138,131. Purchase HVAC controls for high school auditorium and Siemens industry for $78,000. Purchase of high school auditorium AV improvements from Generation Services in amount of $543,830.59. Increased bid threshold from $44,000 to $53,000 effective July 1st, 2025. Approved counseling intern, intern affiliation agreement between Seonho University, College of Human Development, Culture and Media Department of Education Studies, and Milburn Public Schools from June 25th, June 2025 to June 2028. Approved physical therapy intern affiliation agreement between JAG Physical Therapy and Milburn Public Schools from July 2025 to June 2026. Renewed school bus maintenance contract by Bell Air Services for $80,000. Meeting ended at 8:10 PM. Thank you.
Any questions for finance facilities?
I had one error, I'm sorry. The, it wasn't the high school weight room and music room, it's the middle school weight room. And sorry about that, that's my bad.
Any other comments, questions? All right, moving on to governance, Ms. Shavani?
Okay, the governance committee met on Wednesday, July 16th at 6:00 PM. Board members present were Jennifer Patina and myself, Priya Shavani. Staff present were Mr. Connolly, Ms. Terry Hecht, Mr. Dave Bailey, and Dr. Kate Diskin. The committee reviewed policy 1115 to incorporate language related to the establishment and maintenance of performance metrics for key areas of district operations and student outcomes. This will be presented for first reading tonight. Ms. Hecht provided an update on the district website and implementation of Strauss ESMA's district online service for policy management. Both projects are progressing well, slated to complete on time for the start of the next school year. Mr. Bailey provided an overview of the personnel report that is being presented tonight for the board's approval. The meeting concluded at 7:00 PM. Respectfully submitted, Priya Shavani.
Thank you. Any questions for governance? Mr. Ready?
Just for clarification, the update to policy 1115 is that to fulfill the proposed board goal number one.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, no more questions, moving on to program. Mr. Finkelstein?
Yep, thank you. We had, we've had three meetings since, since the last board meeting. The first was Friday, June 26th at 2:15 PM. Board members present were myself, Ms. Ready, Ms. Lonely Richards, and Ms. Shavani. Staff present were Dr. Diskin, Mr. Connolly, Ms. Graff, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Abrams. We briefly discussed scheduling for the program committee over the summer and, and various calendar items for the committee. Mr. Connolly then led a discussion about further thoughts on AP Excel treatment for advanced music electives. The administration had gathered some data from other schools to compare MHS policies. The committee administration also discussed other elective waitings and the pros and cons of different options. The committee then discussed high school grading policies and suggestions from teachers about potential changes. Mr. Connolly then presented the findings from the June student and teacher surveys on midterms and finals, block scheduling, and test corrections. The committee administration discussed further questions and potential action steps based on the survey results. The next meeting was Friday, June 11th at 2:45 PM. July, sorry, July 11th at 2:45 PM. Board members present were myself, Ms. Lonely Richards, and Ms. Shavani. Staff present were Dr. Diskin and Mr. Connolly. We discussed AP access and potential for future opening. The administration said they would gather data to present to the committee in the future. We reviewed a draft version of the high school grading data for the recent school year 24, 2025. The data was organized by subject and the administration offered to present additional data by grading course for the next meeting. And then the last meeting was Friday, July 18th at 10:00 AM. Board members present were myself, Mr. Heinrichs as a sub, Ms. Lonely Richards, and Ms. Shavani. Staff present were Dr. Diskin, Mr. Connolly, Ms. Young, and Ms. Martin. We heard a draft presentation of the graduation readiness presentation, I think that was presented earlier tonight. Ms. Martin then presented some additional data for seventh grade math placement. The enrollment is likely to be expanded with the addition of NJ SLA data that came in earlier than expected, I would add. The committee pressed the administration to be as open as possible when setting the new standards. Mr. Connolly then presented MMS final 24, 2025 grading data. The committee discussed reviewing placement data at a future event, at a future date, based on the grading that just was completed. The curriculum and directors are also reviewing placement data and policies and would come back to the committee with information for the various subjects. Mr. Connolly then presented MHS final 2024, 2025 grading information. The committee discussed if any changes or tweaks to grading policy should be made. The administration is reviewing again, but leaning toward leaving the current plan pending more data. Then Dr. Diskin finally provided a draft of board and district goals. She also discussed summer work schedules for the administration for next year. Then we received an update on progress with new hire, new hire training, the admin team taking part in the team building day on the adventure ed course, and the remaining and ongoing hiring processes. That was it. Respectfully submitted, Andrew Finkelstein, Chair.
Any questions for program? Mr. Farjune?
Yeah, I actually have just a quick comment. This is the first board meeting after the conclusion of the, the school year. And as a private citizen and parent, I have heard many, many, many parents offer their gratitude for the retesting policy, parents of high school students. The retesting, you know, it allows students to actually go back and cover material that they don't know. As a result, the AP results were outstanding. Many students actually didn't even study for the APs. They knew the material so well. It's a credit to the teachers of Milburn High School, the administration that worked tirelessly, and the program committee that meets every single Friday. So I just wanted to kind of, as a, sharing from a citizen's perspective and as a parent, the overwhelming positive feedback on the retesting that was implemented. So, thank you.
More positive feedback. Thank you. I have a question on the seventh grade math placements. Many community members have been kind of talking about it. Is there anything you can share at this time or a timeline of when decisions will be made and shared?
There's, so we did receive preliminary data on the NJ SLA. We're using that data to further look at opportunities to expand access based on that, those, those results that came in. So we are also looking at where we eventually initially made the 99th percentile and is that something that we can use to further expand out based on that NJ SLA data. So there will be communications going out to additional families with students that were on the cusp of getting in and we'll be expanding that access before the end of the week.
I just wanted to note that the NJ SLA scores are preliminary and they just came in. So that information is being, the reason why we're expanding is because we got that information and we feel that it's valuable to take a look at that, even though it's preliminary.
Fantastic, thank you. Was there more comments? Mr. Lawrence?
I just want to say that I fully support any expansion for greater access, not only for the seventh grade, but all middle school opportunities for accelerated classes as well as high school. The more we could expand the opportunities, the more we give additional pathways for all the students. Thank you.
Mr. Bigman?
Yeah, thank you for the update. Earlier this year, we heard and saw a presentation on the midterm grades, I believe, and I was just wondering, is there going to be a communication for the community at some later board meeting with the final grades?
So we did have programs speak about that and we'll be tying that to our district goals and board goals with a presentation probably either at the end of the summer or early September. We'll be highlighting the same type of presentation where we outline grades and performance and comparison to the year before.
I mean, certainly the board, I'll just add, on the access comment earlier, you know, the board has definitely heard, I think, the board, you know, has heard the, the communications from the community and, you know, about concern and we, we asked the questions certainly to the administration and Ms. Martin of, you know, where they feel comfortable pushing the lines too. And it is, communities understand it is a pilot program and the first time we're doing it, but the, it, the numbers will be released soon. It's, it's, it seems, it's like, it's a reasonable starting program, you know, more than that, more than one section, obviously, for, for a pilot. And we're, and, and at least the, the committee members were in favor of, you know, leaning towards being open to as many kids as they, as they academically feel like are ready and can handle it and balance those, those sort of, you know, their concerns with readiness and then open access. So they're, they're doing their best to achieve that right balance with a new, with a brand new program. So, but yeah, we're addressing that issue as best we can.
Ms. Shavani?
Very interesting topic of access. I, I do want to make a couple of comments. One, I think with the expanded AP access, as Mr. Farjune reported, our students have still done really well in the AP tests. So that does show that even if we do expand it bit by bit, our students can handle that. At, at the same time, I do want to just, just put it out there that, you know, we do have to be a bit thoughtful in how much and how we expand the access. And, and we kind of have to give our educators the room for that expansion and for that thought process. It's, it's good that we're looking at like NJ SLA data, for example, right? And we're taking that measured approach. And, and so I just request the community to allow time and space for making those decisions.
The only thing I'll just add in that is that we are using the data, right? And so I think we're really trying to look at the data and make the most informed decisions possible about these expansions in, in every opportunity and not looking at it as just no, but trying to make the most informed decisions based on the information that we have at hand. And that's why we are able to open potentially this up to more students because new data came in to support the need for students to be, have access to this pilot program. So, and that, we'll have a better sense in a year where that decision landed and then be able to make decisions about whether expanding it or keeping it where it's at, so.
Mr. Ready?
Thank you. One thing I don't know if you guys realized, we are creating newer qualifications, qualifiers, whether we look at it that way or not. And we're obviously trying to be thoughtful, but the challenge with any kind of projection, whether it's something about the success of a student or the price of a stock, any of our ability to predict success is pretty, pretty low. And even for the, in the past, there's nobody out there that has consistently been able to pick stocks and that people get paid a lot of money. I think we have to approach this with a sense of humility where we let the students opt in with the recommendation rather than a requirement as to who can take a course. That I think will be a much faster experiment in terms of what works and what doesn't rather than waiting. than waiting and to take incremental steps and have those results come back. That's a really slow feedback process, whereas we let the students opt in, I think it'll be a much faster process getting there.
Thank you for all the comments. That was a good discussion. I did have the opportunity to sub in, and I thought the conversation was great. It was all about how can we give opportunity to more kids, not, we have this number of seats, or we're trying to restrict this, which is a very different conversation than I had witnessed three years ago, for instance. So, comments heard, the community has spoken too. It's, it's a hard process, kind of where you draw these lines and how you do it. I think we're doing a much better job. We'll probably never get it right. It's always gonna be a challenge for somebody, but I, I think we're doing a much better job of it, and we'll keep pushing, no matter what you do, so. You're already used to it. All right, I think we made it through the board committee reports, administrative reports. Mr. Connolly?
Thank you. The CNI office has been working throughout the summer to foster the leadership and instructional needs of the staff and the leadership through the Leadership Academy and staff professional development sessions. Both internal staff and external presenters have facilitated these sessions. Our in-house staff professional development has focused on differentiated instruction, which has been our focus this summer. The CNI office has also managed over 50 new curricula that, which are being developed this summer through curriculum writing projects, including the creation of new courses, updating standards, and units. Further details will be shared at the August board meeting with highlights on those curriculum updates. The new staff orientation will take place the week of August 18th. We look forward to welcoming and acclimating over 30 new teachers and staff members to Milburn. State assessment scores, as demonstrated during tonight's presentation, the spring 2025 NJGPA data. The district will also provide a comprehensive overview of student performance on the NJSLA state assessment this fall. We remain steadfast in our commitment to the academic success of all learners by closely examining both the overall student performance and the underperforming subgroups on standardized assessments such as NJSLA and NJPA. Through data-driven analysis, we will identify achievement gaps, implement targeted interventions to support students who require additional resources and instructional adjustments. Furthermore, we will leverage the data to evaluate our curriculum and instructional practices, identifying opportunities for, to enhance student performance. This deliberate focused, this deliberate and focused commitment underscores our commitment to equity, inclusion, and continually improving the outcomes for all students. And then finally, just a save the date reminder for Rocktoberfest 2025. The Milburn Education Foundation's Rocktoberfest returns bigger than ever on Saturday, September 13th, from 12 to 10 PM at Taylor Park. The rain date will be September 20. This fundraiser features live music on multiple stages, local food and drinks, art contests, artisan vendors, and fitness zone with free classes, a kids' zone with games and rides, fun for the whole family. Volunteers, teens, adults are needed for this, for this event. Please email rock@milburneducation.org to get involved. For full details, including the band lineup schedules, visit milburnrocktoberfest.org. Respectfully submitted John Connolly.
Ms. Longley Richards?
I just wanted to say just very quickly, it's rock@milburnedfoundation, not education, it's milburnedfoundation.com. I'm one of the...
Dot org.
Yeah, dot org, sorry, sorry, dot org. Rock@milburnedfoundation.org. Okay, cool. Yes, I'm one of the music chairs, and I'm also leading groups of interns. We have a bunch of student interns from the, from around the district who are working very hard with us to put together all of these things. Mr. Farshid is also one of the intern mentors that are happening this summer and, and just getting and keeping our students really involved. So just another plug, make sure you make it to Rocktoberfest and do every rain dance. That it's, we don't need the rain date. By the way, our headliner for Rocktoberfest is called Fix You, which is a Coldplay cover band. Since Coldplay's having a moment.
Mr. Farshid?
Just on the theme of Rocktoberfest, I'd like to ask everyone in the community to get involved and, and in particular, consider a donation or sponsorship. This is money that goes towards our kids, our schools, and our community. It's, it's a great way to show our spirit and support, so please do consider contributing and give, and, and keep giving until it hurts. Thank you.
Mr. Stars, anything else to add for business administration?
No, Mr. Lawrence covered it all with all the projects going on.
Fantastic, thank you. Moving on to public comments, please state your name and address for the record. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Responses to questions and comments will be posted to the district website before the next board meeting or within 10 school days.
Gisela Benderski, 334 White Oak Ridge Road. Okay, sorry. Okay. A little over two years ago, I was one of the more than 1,900 parents that signed a petition calling for changes in our high school. Changes to grading policies and to the practices that were preventing many well-qualified students from accessing high-level courses. Now, more than two years later, I'm proud of the progress that's been made, but I also carry a regret. I wish I had asked for those same changes for the middle school. Today, we see middle school students earning As in their classes, but being told they can't move up to the next courses at a higher level. Don't even ask about this. We continue to see significant differences in grading from teacher to teacher, differences that can unfairly affect students' opportunities. And even more troublesome, we see the middle school coming out of their own way to prevent students from taking higher courses. Last week marked the appeal window for middle school courses, course placement. I would love to know how many parents actually submitted appeals? How many of those appeals were granted? From what I've heard in conversations with other families, the number is very slim. I would like to confirm that. So I ask, why offer an appeal process if it doesn't truly give parents a chance to advocate for their children? Why are we still using mechanisms that limit our students' ability to challenge themselves and grow? I urge you to consider adopting the same thoughtful, student-centered practices that were successfully implemented in the high school. This year, I saw firsthand what our students are capable of when they are trusted, supported, and pushed to rise to new challenges. I'm asking you to give our middle schoolers the same chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tara Halpern, 21 Pine Terrace West. I appreciate that the administration is going to look at the NJSLA to see if there are additional 7th graders that can have expanded access to algebra, and I know that the 7th grade families have really been pushing hard for this. But I'm an 8th grade parent, and the 8th graders have been completely left in the dust. It seems, feels to me, I, I have a senior who just graduated. His grade was also an experimental grade. The 8th graders are totally left in the dust, and I'd like to ask for you to look at the NJSLA as maybe expanding accelerated class, accelerated access for 8th graders in math and in English, and consider other options for expanded opportunities to try accelerated classes in the other subjects. I don't know if everybody on the board is aware of this, but for math, they look only at your test scores, and at, for the rest of the subjects, they look at your test scores and your homework scores. So frequently, you have a child such as mine, who would have made it in math if you had looked at the homework, and wouldn't, and would have made it in science if you had not looked at the homework. It should be consistent across the classes, and our students should know at the beginning of the year what they need to accomplish in order to make those levels. It's really become a, a situation where our 7th graders need to be nearly perfect to take an accelerated class in 8th grade, a perfect opportunity to experiment, to take that risk, when it's not going to count for your college transcript. And I know that it was, it has really left many students feeling very dejected and disappointed, and it's really not fair, and it's really, it's really a missed opportunity. Our 8th graders are still part of the middle school, and they deserve a leg up or an opportunity to just grow and take a chance. With respect to the retesting, I want to echo what Asaf said. It had a tremendous impact on my students' experience, so much so that it opened up an opportunity for one of my children to do something this summer that she may not have had the opportunity to do. We talk a lot about retesting and grades as it impacts college applications, but it also impacts applications for summer programs, and she's had the most phenomenal experience this summer that I don't know if she would have had if not for having both the opportunity to retake a test, but also to go back and relearn the material and build confidence in a subject matter that she's now considering for her career. The other thing is that we've only had it in place for a year. We don't know yet what impact that will have on college acceptances, because the students who just graduated didn't really get that benefit. So I urge you to keep it consistent, I'm sorry, I'll be really quick, and there's no one behind me. I'll, I urge you to keep it consistent and really let this experiment play out and see what kind of impact this could have as our rising seniors start the application process. And last, I would really like to hear an update on what's happening in the high school guidance department vis-à-vis getting Milburn back on the radar for colleges throughout this country, because I think our name has fallen off the radar. We are not known the way that we used to be, and we are really an outstanding school system. Colleges should be excited when they see our students apply and not discounting them because our grades don't match what's coming out of Livingston or other similar school districts. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Halpern. All right, I see no other public comments. Moving on to board action items, instruction agenda items. May I have a motion, any second, to approve instruction agenda items 1A through L? Mr. Farshid, Mr. Lawrence, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Farshid?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Yes.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Motion's passed. Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve the personnel report? Mr. Bigman, Mr. Finkelstein can second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Abstain.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farshid?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve business agenda items 3A through 3I? Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Farshid can second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Abstain, M. Dr. 3. A, yes, on this.
Thank you. Mr. Shavani?
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farshid?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Motion approved. May I have a motion and second to approve policy 1115 for first reading? Ms. Shavani? Mr. Farshid? Any discussion? Mr. Ready?
Thank you. So as I reviewed both last year's board goal number four, and this year's proposed goal, board goal number one, one thing stands out clearly. These goals are meant to serve both internal governance and public accountability. Last year's goal was explicit. It called for annual metrics. This year's goal references a calendar, which may imply cadence, but I would adjust to bring back the clarity of the word "annual" in the, in the policy revision. Clarity matters, especially in policy. The proposed, the policy as it stands does not define what routine means, it does not identify where the metrics has to be established or maintained, it does not guarantee access either for the board or the public to those metrics. And since there is no corresponding regulation to elaborate on these critical aspects, the policy is becoming little more than a feel-good placeholder, and hence a danger to the public. This would, that would be a missed opportunity and a disservice to the community. Our policies shouldn't not just describe ideals, they must operationalize accountability. A well-written policy names an actor, defines an action, and links it directly to the institutional benefit of the school district. So here are the tests I propose. Would this policy hold up against the worst-intentioned actor? Could this policy have protected the board and the community had it been in place in years past? I fear the answer is no. Therefore, I recommend we return this policy to the committee with clear direction. Number one, strengthen the language around metrics, including frequency and ownership. Number two, create a corresponding regulation that specifics, that specifies where the metrics live, how they're used, and whether they're reviewed in board committees or shared publicly. And finally, update policy 013 on board self-evaluation to ensure that the board explicitly considers these metrics when assessing its own performance each year. Accountability begins with ourselves. Let's make sure our policies reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Any other comments?
So, just, just to respond a little bit to that, I think we did discuss providing some level of detail in the policy itself, but those details will be added to the regulation. Being too prescriptive in terms of what exact metrics to report and set it in policy, we don't know how that'll pan out in the next, you know, five, 10 years, which is why our, you know, our discussion centered around having those details mentioned in the regulation, which I think the administration is going to work on. So I just wanted to provide that insight.
All right, I think we can move to roll call, please. Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
No.
Ms. Shavani?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farshid?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Passed. Thank you. All right, moving on to old business. We're going to talk about district and board goals, and hopefully finalize around that.
You want to be the clicker?
Yeah. You're gonna, Mr. Connolly's leading the discussion?
He's gonna be the clicker.
Oh, okay. Mr. Connolly's the clicker?
So I'll lead the discussion. Just for the public's sake, I wanted to put up there sort of what we're talking about just for reference. This is a draft. We had a retreat, which I thought was extraordinarily helpful, and it definitely was an awesome discussion among all board members and our administrative staff in sort of getting this together. So, our first district goal, and so this is a conversation, it goes under old business is, is a sort of a follow-up from the board retreat. You know, we talked about the need for that strategic plan, and I think that that is a valuable thing to the district, as we learned from NJSBA. It should tie into your strategic plan, ties into your district goals, which ties into a plan for, for moving forward. So... So, the first district goal would be to develop a strategic plan that engages community stakeholders and gives voice to community aspirations for the students of Milburn. And I added the "for the students of Milburn" because that's what we're all here for. So all of these goals should tie into what's best for kids. And so things like actions and activities, and we can, you know, in terms of a SMART goal, we look for things that are, you know, measurable with a definite indicator of achievement. And, and you'll see on the paper that I gave you, our handout here, it's highlighted in yellow at the top for the board to take a look at. And that kind of outlines some of the activities and actions. What we need to do tonight is determine if these are the goals that we want to go for with, go forward with, so that we can start to work on and develop those SMART goals that go along with them. But activities and actions underneath that would be, you know, taking a look at a planning committee, a steering committee, and ultimately, the end result would be the development of that strategic plan. Any, do you want to go through each one as we go?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just keep going. Okay, do you want to discuss district goal one?
No, I think we should discuss now why it's fresh. Does anybody have any comments or suggested changes to this?
On that strategic plan?
Yes, on the strategic plan.
Um, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have comments. I think, given that this is a district goal, I think it's implied, or, you know, maybe we can talk, one of the outcomes is the Board of Education adopts the plan. I believe it's implied it's before the end of this coming school year, is that?
That's, we would have it for implementation in the 26, 27 school year. So the end of, the end of the, well, in June of 2026, let's just say.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure it's not from a SMART goal, you know, the time-bound, it's implied in here.
Correct.
So I'm good with that.
Yeah, but I can make it more clear, if that's something you'd like. We can do that.
Yeah, I mean, by the end of the school, yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Longley Richards?
And just one, one word difference, if we can, I don't know, I think the preferred word is constituents instead of stakeholders more recently, so it's just.
I will, I will fix that. Good point.
Thank you.
Want to move on?
Yes, please.
You're good? Okay. Oh, Noel, sorry.
I'm sorry, just, yeah, there's a quick one, maybe it ties to the next two. I just wanted to, I think I confirmed this at the board retreat as well, but in terms of ordering of the goals, does that represent any priority or is it just in a general format?
It's just in a general format. They're all priorities.
Thank you.
All right, so we're good to go with that and I can move forward on that goal. Okay. District goal two, we talked about operational culture and climate, and that tied into the newness here in the district. And we have a lot of new employees coming in. We need to strengthen our collaboration, our communication, and increase efficiency towards serving our students. And by that, I mean an example such as developing that leadership academy. Are we all on the same page? Are we making sure that our protocols are the same for all staff and students? We're looking at handbooks and, and all those. And so creating that sort of standard operating procedures across the schools, developing standard operating procedures, and taking a look at our onboarding and offboarding processes for staff, along with that ties in a mentorship program and things of that nature. So indicators of achievement would be that standard operating procedures and, you know, looking at further, like what does our mentoring program look like for our new staff?
Comments, questions? Mr. Finkelstein?
Yeah, for the, for the indicators of achievement, just for the onboarding and offboarding of staff, can we add something on the indicators of achievement for that one? Because there's like two for the other two.
Yep.
There's nothing for like, like, what is our new, I guess we're going to want to know what is our new onboarding and offboarding of staff? Or like, how are we doing it before and like, what are our changes going to be? Like some sort of report? And then like, what are the new, what are the new procedures and policies for onboarding, offboarding?
I just noticed it was, those two are the same, so I will revise that.
Yeah, or there, you need like an action for each of the three.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Dr. Discan, how are we going to know success in terms of like, it's easy to report, yes, we developed this new process, we had a policy, we taught everyone. How do we really know it's operating effectively and people truly are following it? How are we going to be able to see that?
Well, a couple of things. One, we could take a look at doing sort of that pre-assessment and that post-assessment in terms of like, what is it that people are knowledgeable about and what are some of the things that were clarified? I mean, I suppose we could do a before and after. You know, this is what was and this is what's in place, similar to the onboarding, and do a report on that. So I think that those are things. And I think when we think about the success of those, that goal, it's, you know, I mean, we want to make sure that our processes and procedures, such as safety, are implemented. Like, do we have, you know, fire maps on all the doors, right? Are those those things that we need to make sure that we're standardizing? So I could kind of do a pre of what, a pre-assessment of what we need to do, and then the post-assessment would, but we, what would we have? Does that work?
But, Dr. Discan, I was, like, consistency rate across what we're doing is, is an indicator of success to some degree as well. Looking at, are we implementing the same types of procedures when we're doing our hiring process? Is that looking the same in each building and are they running at the similar format? While those may not be applicable, exactly, they are also indicators that we've successfully put correct processes in place for success.
Right, and we heard from, in our coffee chats and things, that one of the requests, for example, from the community was that something as simple as newsletters were sent on the same format, on the same time each week, right? So that all the schools were being informed of those things at the same time. Right now, that's not happening. So we could do a before and after, if that makes sense.
Very helpful, thank you.
Yeah. So are we good to go on?
Everybody good with this goal? Any more comments? Ms. Shavani?
Yeah. I think we did discuss this in the retreat, but I just wanted to reiterate that as part of the standard operating procedure, also just having more continuity between elementary, middle, and high, I think if you could include that, that would be a good deliverable in the standard operating procedures.
Yep. All right. So we're on to the academic culture and climate. And realize that the, the words academic culture and climate isn't just a one-shot deal, right? This is over time, so you want to break these goals apart. You know, the theme is academic culture and climate. The theme is operational. The theme is the strategic plan, but over time, you're going to break that down over years, and that will be identified in that strategic plan. But for the academic culture and climate, we still want to continue to define those high expectations. We want to make sure that we have collaborative professional learning and student-centered engagement. And by that, we would talk about evaluating the current and historical data at the middle school level, right? Similar to what we did at the high school. We need to dive deep into that. We've already started looking at that, but that needs to be done. And then, you know, again, continue to evaluate the middle school in relations to the high school. Like, how are we building those blocks all the way up from elementary into the fifth grade program and into the middle school and into the high school? And that talks about evaluating those advanced placement elective courses as an example in the high school. It talks about looking at the middle school in terms of access to that and what is the criteria and those kinds of things? And how can we continue to promote access there? So, the other thing is we need to think about the differentiation of our elementary schools in that we are launching, we need to launch what we call a win period across all schools that is currently not occurring and it should be occurring, in line with our district goal last year, which was goal two, talking about an NJ TSS or MTSS program. That is part of the implementation plan now of NJ TSS and MTSS, which is New Jersey Tiered Systems of Support. So adding that scope in there. And so you would see that the success on that would be, again, working on that assessment framework that we've been doing, looking at data in terms of why, where, where students apply to take the courses? Did they get in? Why? Why not? Were they eligible for an appeal? What was the eligibility? And all of those things. And we should see an increase in those. Again, all cohorts are different, so you can't really say, oh, there'll be a 90% increase, right? You can't, you can't put a number to that, but you can demonstrate that there's increase and it can go a slow, you know, sort of methodically into that. And then the win period, and, you know, an example of progress in that would be, you know, what does the win period look like in all of the schools? That there's consistency among them, that there's students that are eligible for those, and how are they eligible and what does that look like? So report out on that. And then I think we need to also look at, we have a new counseling framework as well, and sort of reporting out on what does that counseling framework look like in the elementaries, the middle school, and now the high school? Since we have added elementary school counselors, what does that look like? What are they doing? Again, we could do a before and after. We did not have, we do not have a standard program in the elementary schools. What does that look like now and how do we move forward with that? So, sort of that before, what we, what we sort, take a look at what we currently are doing and then where we need to go, and then get there.
Any comments or questions on that too? Mr. Finkelstein?
Yeah, maybe for this one, just evaluate the current, the first block on the activities, evaluate the current historical data at the middle school level. Does it make sense to be like a bit more specific there and say placement and grading data?
Sure.
So we all know what we're talking about? I think that's the evaluation that clearly everybody wants.
Yep.
So let's, we got to get at that.
Any other comments? On goal number three?
Um, no, I'm good on this. I had another question, just.
Go, go ahead.
On something different or on this goal?
Well, it would be like the next, something we talked about at the board retreat. I don't know if it would have been under academic, I can't remember which category.
Just shoot it out there, Mr. Finkelstein.
Yeah. Cell phone and technology policies and procedures.
So that's going to go under policy, under the board goal.
Okay, that's bull.
In fact, we're currently working on that, looking at that now, and hopefully, and my goal is to get that up and running for the fall.
Okay, that's going to be on one of the board?
The board, yep.
Okay.
That will be the policy committee.
Oh, sorry. Okay, yeah, that's what I knew was coming.
So we're good on districts?
Are we good yet? Good on districts? Oh, Mr. Reddy?
Thank you. So, one thing that I don't think, I don't know if it's intentional, are we addressing some of the accelerated programs? We talk about AP a lot, but there are students that might be, be looking to take accelerated program, courses. I don't think we have meaningfully addressed at the board level some of these criteria for getting into the accelerated program. I think that's something that we should actively look into.
Yeah, I think your point's well taken. I think I can rephrase that. I can rephrase that second bullet there.
Yeah, accelerated and advanced placement.
Yeah, and I also think that, you know, while we're, while we're at that, we should look at the CPB CPA. So I think we'll just broaden the scope to all levels.
Yeah.
Yes. We talked in the board retreat about goals that were, you know, realistic and those that were the reach. So some of this will add some reaches to that, and I will outline those things. But I wanted to just cut to the chase on what these are done, but certainly if we can go further and deeper, we will. We good? All right, board goal number one talks to that educational reporting piece, which deals with the policy that was on for first reading tonight. We, we did, this was also on a board goal from last year, and look, we can't do everything, you know, 110%, but we, we've moved towards that. But I think you, we're in a good spot where we can look at that and you can work, we can work together on our reporting calendar that outlines the presentations and the data reporting and those, those metrics and, and get that out to the public. We already have a framework for it, but I think we need more work on that. So I think that that is a district goal that we should continue, or a board goal that we should continue with. So that would be a continuation.
Any comments on this one? Mr. Reddy?
Like I outlined earlier, right, I think it'd be good for us to be explicit in terms of whether those metrics are, that they're annual, that they're being used either for internal governance versus public accountability. I think we need to be clear on those aspects of it in this goal. I think that should translate, hopefully, to a regulation in the future. Like I said, the policy as it stands is highly deficient.
So I was, when you were mentioning that, we can say to establish and coordinate an annual educational reporting, to get that word in there, and then we can move forward. Again, as we mentioned, the regulation will outline those things more specifically.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Should we say establish and publish an educational reporting calendar?
So some, yes, you can publish it. Some of the things that you're going to have are either internal or external. So we could say we could publish the external.
Yeah, that's certainly golden.
And that could be one of the indicators of achievement, publish the external. Yep. All right, anything else on that one? All right, and the board goal two was, you know, to strengthen communications and continue doing that. So the board would coordinate with myself on methods to enhance that community relations. And that includes staff too, right? So when we're talking about our community, we're talking about staff, we're talking about students, we're talking about administrators, we're talking about everyone. So, you know, first of all, I think we need to think about conducting that baseline communications audit on how, how we're doing and benchmark that to our current strengths. I see us taking action on forming an ad hoc committee to look at our website and other, other areas of communication. And then we talked about the increasing of the frequency of our staff liaison meetings to have the board and the staff interact. We also have things such as our middle school liaison, our high school liaison, and those kinds of things, that I think we can sort of look at scheduling those on a more frequent basis to get feedback. And then I think, you know, again, like I said, to report out on what those enhancements look like and how did, how did we take that baseline data and how did we make improvements based upon that? I mean, we're already, you know, making improvements on our website by taking out the old and putting in the new. You know, we have lots from years past that were still on that website, so we're taking that down and doing those more. So it's almost like that, that list again of what do we have now and where do we need to move to?
Great communication on that one, apparently.
Okay, great. And then our, oh, sorry, go ahead.
It's a, it's one of the challenges I've seen with a lot of documents that are published on our website today, the scanned documents or printed, scanned copies of printed documents. We actually have the originals PDF file. I think we should start publishing the original PDF files rather than the scanned copies. It's, the scanned copies make it impossible to search for anything.
Yeah. Yep. Good point.
Good point, yeah. I don't think it has to go in the, the goals, that is an action step in there somewhere.
But I'll make sure that we're not scanning. And then board goal three is the policy. We've made some good headway on, on policies, but we need to start looking at, even when school boards talked about, like the mandated policies. Are we up to speed on those? Let's start with looking at those and what has to be. I've noticed that there are a few district policies that are outdated significantly. Some of them, quite frankly, don't even need to be there. They were supposed to have been abolished many, many years ago. So we need to do some cleanup and some audit first. And then we need to look at the next step, which is, you know, the first step is what's mandated, right? As, as they talked about, the second step is what's urgent, right? What are the needs, such as the AI policy or the cell phone policy and those kinds of things? And then we can work, work through those. So that would be the board's goal and the governance committee and everyone else's to kind of looking at that and, and looking at doing an audit of that, which the board would be able to look at those policies and be able to see which ones they want to dive into. I will make recommendations to you about the ones that I think need to be cleaned up. I mean, there's one that's really simple. It's, one is about your board meetings, right? The current policy says it starts at 7:45. It starts at seven, so let's just clean that up and get that on, right? So there are some, some things that are going to be easy to clean up. But again, as we talked about with New Jersey school boards, it is in the best interest of students to get your policies up to date and start with your mandated policies and making sure that those are accurate. So that would be the ambitious goal of doing that. And the report or the indicators of achievement. And the report, or the indicators of achievement would be, obviously, the updated policies. We're also enhancing accessibility on our website through Staus Esme. We're going to have a new search system whereby it will be easier to search the policies and the regulations, which I think will be extraordinarily helpful.
Any comments, questions on this one? Ms. Shavani?
Yeah, to that last point, I just wanna add, Mr. Ready, the comment that you just made, hopefully this Staus Esme's district online will help with searching the policies and doing the comparisons. And the 1115 is actually not a policy that exists in
Correct.
many other districts, but we are keeping it as a district-specific policy, so we can have those, the policy around metrics and measuring our goals.
Yep. Yeah.
Just wanna comment, someone has tested that ability to go in and check out the different, you know, policies and comparative information on it, and it was very user-friendly, very helpful, and easy to access.
Yeah. Be much better.
Okay, any overall final comments about the goals? I think the plan would be, there's a couple Word tweaks here. It would be good to kind of recirculate those in the upcoming weeks, and then the next meeting, we're going to officially be done with these and adopt them. Is that the plan?
Correct.
Fantastic. Thank you for that discussion. Is there any other new business items? Mr. Ready?
Mr. President, I would request your indulgence as I make a personal announcement, one that may lead to a, to a new business before this board. Nearly three years ago, I stood before this community as a first-time candidate for the, the Board of Education. I could not have fully imagined the journey that lay ahead of me. These past three years have been intense, have been challenging, and deeply meaningful. And I ran, I ran, made two central promises, to improve transparency and clarity in school communications, and to expand access and choice for students in accelerated and AP programs. Today, I am proud to say, with gratitude to my colleagues and the dedication of the current administration, that we have made substantial progress on both fronts, despite some recent hiccups with new pathways. I thank each one of you for your partnership in this effort. I have never measured the value of my service by the length of my tenure, and I often said only half jokingly, that if I were to take pride in, in the number of years I've served, someone should just take me aside to... To me, what matters more, what matters is not tenure, but impact, and I believe I have made significant impact here. Beyond delivering on campaign commitments, I've had the honor of contributing to the most significant expansion of the AP access and changes in grading policy in Milburn's recent history, as well as to the largest organizational restriction this district has ever seen. I leave with deep pride in what we have accomplished together. That said, this unfinished work, I regret that I have not yet, we, we have not yet adopted a comprehensive policy around performance metrics, and we have yet to guarantee open access to all courses for all students. I sincerely hope that you all will see both of these efforts through. But there is one challenge that is greater than any policy or structure, the challenge of, of culture. In January, I spoke of the need for cultural transformation within our school district. Despite the enormous amount of organizational change, that need remains. Last year's staff culture survey, along with this June's student and staff survey and retesting, reveal a very troubling disconnect. Despite multiple data presentations from grades and the SAT score distributions to the positive impacts of retesting and student learning, many staff members continue to express deep skepticism that those grades reflect true mastery. This has been personally very painful for me. I'd hoped the gap in perception between the students and, and staff would, would have been narrower. I was surprised, unfortunately. Instead, we find students overwhelmingly affirming that the new guidelines help them focus more on learning and growth. Despite a commentary recently from students, the overwhelming majority of the students thought the changes actually helped with their learning and growth, while most staff members remain unconvinced. Clearly, something is amiss, either our communication has fallen short, or we are grappling with deeply ingrained, ingrained beliefs that resist change, perhaps both. Either way, the board and the administration must continue this critical work, because at stake is nothing less than the future of our students. If the past 18 months have proven anything, it is that meaningful progress in public education need not be slow. We are not yet there where we need to be. We are not yet caught up to our peer districts on certain measures, let alone, let alone leap ahead of them. I urge this board and our community to maintain, even accelerate, the pace of reform. As the poet Dallin Thomas wrote, "Do not go gentle into that good night. Old age should burn and rage at the close of day, rage, rage against the dying of the light." Public education deserves that kind of passion and urgency. In public service, we each run a leg of a relay race. The pattern must be passed, not when it is convenient for us, but when the moment calls for it. I have run my leg as hard as I could over the last two and a half years, but the demands of my personal and professional life now make it difficult for me to serve this board with the focus and energy that our students and community deserve. So it is with full heart that I officially turned down my resignation from the board today, effective immediately. I hope the board will consider appointing someone who has already expressed interest in running this November, someone who could benefit from a head start in serving our schools. To my colleagues, I have provided a motion to accept my resignation tonight, should you choose to move swiftly, as we so often have. To the community that interested me with this role, thank you. Thank you for your faith. Your engagement and your commitment to where this goes from. Good night, and good luck.
Thank you, Vishwa. You certainly have made an impact. I don't think anyone has worked harder over the past two and a half years. You will, you will be missed. I, I think you did make us better. Whether we agreed with her or not, you pushed us to think, to adopt, to make things better. That will definitely be, be missed. I do think we will carry on that legacy and continue down the path that you have set us upon.
Thank you.
Any other comments before Mr. Ready tries to sneak out here?
Yeah, I mean,
Ms. Shavani?
I, I don't have words, but, Mr. Ready, I think it has been, as Mr. Heinrich said, we've had disagreements, but that is, that is the point of actually working as a team, is that you don't always agree, and that is what makes you better. And so, thank you for that, and your leadership has been exemplary. I, I think you sort of started a lot of the work, and, and we are here, thanks to, thanks to your efforts. It's been an absolute pleasure working with you, and I hope you would reconsider. I'm gonna vote no on that, just to let everyone know, so.
Mr. Farshood?
Just a quick comment. I've been observing the board for many years before I, I ran and joined, and I would observe that before you joined the board, Vishwa, there was rare disagreement or questioning. And not only have you changed the culture of the district, you've actually changed the culture of the board, where we don't always agree. I mean, we, I mean, more so in committee, but also here, we challenge each other, we question each other. It comes, it, it makes for a better decision at the end of the day, and that's another attribute that you brought, so thank you for that.
Dr. Reska?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you as well. You brought a lot of definite spirit into the transition for our students. You're here for kids, and I think that all board, board members can learn from the example that Vishwa set for that we are out for the good for students. And for that, we thank you for your service.
I would also expect, I don't know why, there seems
Can't get away yet.
There seems to be some issue with former board members coming to the podium, so you're one to break precedent. I hope you break that precedent and keep us honest from out there. Mr. Ready was kind enough to give us the, the heads up. I think the official rules are, if the election is more than 65 days away, we have to run the process to appoint a new board member. So you'll be hearing more about that process from Mr. Stars. I think just briefly, there'll be a, a date on which people can submit their application to be a board member, which would just fulfill his term to the end of this year. They'll come to the board meeting, give a quick two, three-minute spiel, and then it's a simple vote of the board members. So we'll be more clear on the procedures in, in upcoming time. But I think to further that process along, I think we can do a verbal resolution here.
Motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Ready, effective immediately, July 21st, 2025?
You said it for me.
First and second?
Fantastic.
Second? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you. Any other new business? I know, I was gonna say, who wants to follow that act? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, that was old business. Is there? No, that was, any other new business? That was new business, all right. Second round of public comments. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Same rules as the first time? Please go ahead.
Jeanette Glass, 348 Old Short Hills Road. Dear board members and administrators, this forum exists to promote transparency, invite public input, and protect the integrity of decisions that shape our children's education and well-being. Unfortunately, over the past 18 months, several board members have repeatedly acted in violation of those core principles. Key decisions affecting students, staff, and the broader community were made behind closed doors, outside of public view. Voices of students, parents, and community members were suppressed. Civil rights were violated, public comments were limited or outright dismissed, ignoring the constitutional right to free speech under the First Amendment. Decisions were made in ways that raised serious concerns under the Age Discrimination Act of 1975. And the School Ethics Act, intended to ensure honesty and integrity in school governance, has been breached multiple times, evidenced by ongoing ethics complaints. Yet those responsible have faced minimal accountability and have continued to operate with disregard for public trust and legal boundaries. Last year, legal counsel was hired without proper board-wide approval or transparent process, despite objections from both the public and within the board. This action reflects a larger pattern of unilateral decision-making that undermines collaborative governance. Today's resignation, while significant, is only one step toward truth and accountability. It acknowledges that lines were crossed, ethically, legally, and morally, and that the community deserves better. But let us be clear, it is deeply unjust that one individual has taken the fall for what has been a coordinated pattern of misconduct. More formal complaints are being filed, and investigations are ongoing. The district, this district, wants a model of educational excellence, must not become a cautionary tale of ethical collapse. We must reject the normalization of misconduct and recommit to rebuilding a school system grounded in integrity, equity, and respect for the rule of the law. Let this be the turning point. Let us reestablish a student-centered Milburn School District, one where every child is valued, every voice is heard, and every decision is made with transparency, compassion, and collective purpose.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
Jeffrey Feld, from the poets section. I first, I wish Mr. Ready was here, because I would, even though we've gone toe-to-toe, I just wanna thank him for his public service. When you were talking about the, the goals and the policies, at the next meeting, can you maybe provide us like comparison of, let's say, the last two years to what you're doing now? And when we were talking, I think, like, on the plan, maybe the, the board's goals, I think you might wanna start focusing, since the last meeting, we're all hearing about AI. I mean, if that's one of the things that needs to be looked at, because since the last meeting, I can't tell you how many op-eds have appeared in the Wall Street Journal, the New York Times, about AI, because that's gonna be one of the biggest issues that's gonna be affecting education going on. Like, for example, I think yesterday, a professor from Yale had a two-page article about, you know, the idea of being critical thinking. That, that's one of the goals that we're teaching students is what is, because that was always, when you were asking about the culture of Milburn, and the programs that my kids went through, it was the ability of critical thinking, and that we don't lose sight of that. Also, there was an op-ed today from a Harvard sophomore, talking about when she's doing the omission, the new type of essay question that they're looking at. And part of it was, like, how do you communicate with people that you disagree with? And that's what we had to maybe maintain, critical thinking, and how we can agree to disagree while remaining civil. And I just wish Mr. Ready hadn't left out, that I really, you know, we went to toe-to-toe, but I respect him, and I wanna tell him my gratitude for the service that he gave us for the last two and a half years.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Any other public comments? Board member comments? None? I would just like to say that, to my knowledge, Mr. Ready resigned due to his own schedule. He's actually been talking to me about this for months, and to my knowledge, there is nothing else there. So I, I hope nothing was implied that there was. We have an executive session tonight to discuss personnel matters. The content will be disclosed at the next meeting, after we discuss it. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Mr. Farshood, and Mr. Lawrence, all in favor? All right. No action will be taken after executive session. We'll come back into public and adjourn, so nobody really needs to stay. We are an exec, thank you.